Thanks, everyone. And we'll go on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Presentations and Proclamations. And we have two presentations tonight. The first one, 2.1, is a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce, an update. And Vicki, if you will take the stand.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Harof, City Council. So this is our update since it's everything that's happened since we last saw each other, which was, thank you, in June. So briefly, in progress, last time I spoke with you, we were rolling with Story Studio, which is an advertorial on SF Gate, 500,000 guaranteed impressions. We did a story about the five neighborhoods of Larkspur and how Chamber membership benefits the merchants that are in those five neighborhoods. And I'll have some results for you in the next screen. Downtown Larkspur Wine Stroll, our best year ever. Traffic was up 35 percent. We moved the location. It now goes from King to Madrone, and that was a real improvement. It's more compact, and we had a lot more wineries and a lot more attendees. And right now, in progress, we've got two campaigns, digital and print, and those are member retention and member benefits, and I'll go into those in a second. So for the digital marketing on SF Gate, Story Studio, we had 500,000 guaranteed impressions, and it was a really nice piece. It's perma-linked. We continue to use it at the Chamber as an ongoing evergreen sort of a marketing thing. So whenever anybody comes into Larkspur to the Chamber, they can see what we're doing for our members and find out more about the five really distinct neighborhoods that comprise the business area of Larkspur. The results were, as our SF Gate rep said, impressive. We actually ended up with 1.2 million impressions, which was better than the guaranteed promise. People spent an average of 1.43 minutes, which is better than the 1.03 minutes people usually spend. And they came back two and a half times. So they were engaged with the content. And what we did, it was a member benefit, it was free. We sent a videographer around to participating merchants and asked them to, just a little quick 10 seconds of their store. But it was lively, it was active, and it gave us a little media piece that we can continue to use, as well as endorsements and interviews with the merchants. So that was something that continues to go. This is just the results from when the campaign was being measured, but it continues to serve us as an ongoing marketing piece. The Wine Stroll, again, the new route attracted new members. It was a great membership recruitment tool for us. We gained about a half a dozen new members in that area because we changed the rules this year to participate as a host store, you have to be a Chamber member. We had 35 percent improvement over previous years. And of course, all the money that benefits the Chamber goes towards our marketing budget, so it's really put us on an uplift, allowed us to explore a lot more marketing campaigns. The member development that's in print right now is a brochure. The city provided us with a list of business license owners. So in the mail right this second, as we speak, is winging out to the list of 1,500 people, a brochure about the Chamber. Here is why to join, links to things like our Story Studio, and of course, how to join. The remainders are being shipped directly to me so that I can take them around, too. You guys will get a big stack of them, so when people are coming for a business license, you can hand them a brochure about Chamber membership. And I'll be working with our merchants, our shopping centers, people that do commercial leases, to make sure that Chamber membership becomes just a part of what they offer as new businesses join our community. Also going is a digital campaign. So the first part of this campaign, October, it's overarching, October through December, about 350,000 impressions on SF Gate's North Bay, and it's geo-targeted and a very specific audience. So the first 150,000 or so impressions are aimed at people that I can't find going door to door or with business licenses. So it's small office, home office, it's people that don't have a physical footprint but may have a digital footprint. And that was a join Larkspur Chamber message. Just this week, we're switching over to a member benefit component of the campaign. We're changing up the creative, still on SF Gate, and it's a shop Larkspur, dine Larkspur. It's another 230,000 impressions on SF Gate that are going to remind people who come into our, again, geo-targeted, geo-fenced shopping trade area, that Larkspur is a great place to come do your holiday shopping, have your holiday parties, do your holiday meals, and that's a member benefit that's free to all of our members. And that's what the campaign looks like. The Larkspur for the Holidays, Shop Larkspur for the Holidays, is a special page that I created so I can capture traffic, we can look at the data and see how that's performing, and it'll take people right to our member directory so they can see what our various members are. What's a good restaurant? What's a good dress store for something fancy? Where do I stay overnight? What kind of transportation? And again, it's all focused on Chamber members. Those two squares up at the top were part of the now sunsetting "Join Larkspur as a Member." So that's what that all looked like. And again, back to our sort of Larkspur blue branding and keeping it all cohesive. So again, our goals remain the same. We want to increase visibility with marketing, with additional member benefits. I'm always looking for a new way to help our members increase the value of their membership, which remains $10 a month. The board has approved that for one more year, for 2018, so we can really make sure that we hit our membership goals and we can leverage, help our members leverage the value of their memberships, and help the city leverage its investment in us as an organization. So that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Thanks very much, Councilmember Two.
Yeah, I mean, this is really great for the downtown. Do you have other similar programs for the other shopping areas?
So actually, I've encompassed all of our five neighborhoods in this digital campaign. So it's not just focused at downtown, but it will affect anybody that's driving on their way to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge. As they go by Marin Country Mart, if they've got their mobile out, up will pop, shop Larkspur. So it's specified to capture, actually, everything, it goes from Fourth Street in San Rafael down to Tamil Pious, out to 580, and sort of behind us a bit. So I want to get our entire trade area because I know that people who shop in Larkspur don't necessarily live in Larkspur. If they're driving through Larkspur and they're on a mobile device, we want them to get our message. So that's the trade area. You mentioned another thing about downtown. One thing that we just had a board meeting yesterday, and one of the things that we're considering for the Wine Stroll is keep that footprint because it's a great location, but offer members who have businesses in other of our trade neighborhoods, offer them a table so they can come, they can showcase who they are, and keep it, again, a member-only thing, but really make it a strong, vibrant Larkspur Chamber member event, even if you don't have a physical address right there on that part of Magnolia. So I am trying very hard to bring in all of our five diverse neighborhoods, not just downtown.
Thank you. Done a lot in a short time.
Thank you. Well, you guys, I say it every time, and I will continue to say it, we just love the relationship that we have with you and the support that you guys give. You're enthusiastic for coming to ribbon cuttings and for being there and for helping us scout new members. It's a fabulous partnership, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, I love the ribbon cutting. It always means we've got new business or someone that just wants to join the Chambers also. So we even have a ribbon cutting happening in Marin Country Mart. So that's really exciting. And your digital outreach, the media, is superb.
Thank you.
Just to look up, and I've heard it's very simple to join, and it's very informative, so nice job on that.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, Vicki.
And I'll see you guys in a few months.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for the update. We really appreciate it. That'll take us to Agenda Item 2.2, which is another presentation and update from the Marin County Flood Control District, an update on grant migration projects and lower Corder Madera Creek projects.
Good evening, Mayor Harof and members of the council. Oh, great. My name's Tony Williams. I am the Flood Control and Water Resources Division Manager with the County Department of Public Works. However, I'm not here tonight to represent the county. I'm here to represent the Marin County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, which is a totally separate entity from the county. And in fact, tonight, we're going to be talking about a program that has no county funding. It's all funded by Zone Nine, the Ross Valley taxpayers, essentially. Before I get started, I want to just introduce, we have a couple of our team members here tonight, Tanya Redfield, who's the Program Manager, Hugh Davis, who's the Project Manager for one of the projects we're going to highlight tonight, and James Riley with Stetson Engineers, who's going to go over some of the modeling that was done for the program. I was born and raised in Mill Valley. I don't remember this 1973 flood. I do remember the 1982 flood, has really stuck in my mind. It's probably why I got into water resources engineering. But I'm really happy to present to you our Ross Valley Flood Risk Reduction Program. Oh, I guess I got that control here. We've got a pretty robust agenda, so we may not get to all the details we want to tonight, but hopefully, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the program. We're going to show you some output of this fairly sophisticated hydraulic model for the whole watershed. And then Hugh's going to talk about a project specific to Larkspur and highlight the features of that project. And then Tanya's going to come up and talk about our rain gauge, creek gauge, and tidal gauge network in the valley, including some new gauges that are coming into the Larkspur area. And if we have time, we'll talk about our overall creek maintenance program. So I mentioned the, the program is funded by a special fee that was passed in 2006, as well as a very small amount of ad valorem taxes from the taxpayers in the valley. And we've looked at a lot of different things, a lot of concepts and ideas to reduce the frequency and severity of flooding in Ross Valley, and that's really the goal of the program. But what you see here, these lists of projects, this is the program moving forward until 2027, essentially, when that fee expires. This is the focus of the program. The first one up there is bringing the Army Corps back into Corder Madera Creek and finishing up a project they started many, many years ago. The title of that project is the Corder Madera Creek Flood Risk Management Project. It mostly involves portions of the concrete channel upstream towards Ross, but because of trying to complete that project, it will include work further down in the channel, as low as College or Marin area. The second project listed there is what we're calling Phase One of that project, and that is preserving a Department of Water Resources grant that was supposed to go to Phoenix Lake to create Phoenix Lake as a detention basin. That was deemed infeasible, but we're able to work with DWR and preserve that grant and migrate it to a portion of the Army Corps' project. And we hope to, it'll be studied together with the overall bigger project, but we hope to actually complete that project well ahead of the Army Corps. The San Anselmo Flood Risk Reduction Project, that is also a grant migration of another DWR grant that was supposed to go to Memorial Park Detention Basin in San Anselmo, which the voters sort of passed an initiative to remove that from ever being used as a detention basin. But we're trying to migrate that project, or excuse me, that funding to another detention basin up in the upper watershed above Fairfax, as well as some work in downtown San Anselmo. And then, really what we're going to focus on tonight is the Lower Corder Madera Creek Improvement Study, which will hopefully lead to an actual project. But I think Hugh's going to give you some really good information about where that's headed. And then there's a series of bridges that currently act as constrictions to flow in, essentially, the San Anselmo area, but includes a bridge in the Ross area. And that is jointly funded by Caltrans and the Ross Valley Program. So just to give you an idea, these projects are as real as they can be right now. They, for the most part, are either in environmental review, either a SEQA document, or in the case of the first two, it's going to be a joint environmental impact statement, environmental impact report, because there's the Corps involved, and there's federal funding involved. But we're hoping to tear off of that EIS/EIR and do that Phase One project, as I said, much ahead of the Army Corps. And the little green triangles show you kind of the current schedule for completing some of those environmental documents. Again, tonight, we're going to focus on the Lower Corder Madera Creek that really is, I think, more what the city is interested in. And I'm going to first bring up James Riley to talk about the overall watershed modeling that is used as a tool to help evaluate some of these projects. And he's going to actually show you some video output.
James Riley with Stetson Engineers. We're a San Rafael-based water resource engineering firm.
Could you please stay it up and speak into the microphone, or take it out, and you can walk around with it?
Okay.
If that's all right. Thank you.
James Riley with Stetson Engineers. We're a San Rafael-based water resources engineering firm, and we've been working with the county since about 2007 or so on the Ross Valley Flood Program. We were commissioned back around that time to develop a computer model of the Ross Valley watershed, focusing on the main stem of the Corder Madera Creek, to help us understand exactly how and where flooding occurs, why it occurs, where it occurs, and to develop solutions to remedy the flooding. So with this computer model, we are able to look at the creek system and superimpose possible remedies, and then run the model and see how that works, if it fixes the flooding problem at that location or not. So it's a very useful tool. Recently, within the past couple of years, we were commissioned to extend the model. I don't have a pointer here, do I? Oh, like this. Okay. Anyway, the original model is shown here in red. This is a map of the watershed. You can see the watershed divide line here. Here's Corder Madera Creek in red. And it has, it extends up into Sleepy Hollow, it goes up Ross Creek to Phoenix Lake, through Fairfax, then to Cascade Canyon, up Fairfax Creek. And the model includes these tributaries in it. And we were commissioned, within the last couple of years or so, to extend the model farther up these tributaries to include potential detention basin sites, shown here as these yellow dots. So that would enable the model to be able to simulate the operation of these detention basins, to measure their effect. How well do they hold back water? And how much water can they hold back? And how much would the flooding be reduced in Fairfax, San Anselmo, Ross, Kentfield, and even in Larkspur, too? So these detention basins are a very useful way of reducing flooding. We also looked, using at the model, at, you know, replacing bridges that were built originally too low, that act as constrictions, widening the channel in certain areas, those kinds of things. Those kinds of measures we are limited at because creek property owners have built so close to the creek, up to the top of the creek bank. So we're very limited in terms of how much more capacity we can get out of enlarging the creek. So we are dependent, if we ever want to get to a very high level of flood protection, say to the 100-year flood level, of flood protection, very dependent on the only other remedy that's available physically to contain water, which is detention basins. So anyway, these detention basins are now in the model, and the model will be used to evaluate their effectiveness. So I'm going to show you just a video, just kind of to get you an idea of what this model does and how it's used. Let's look at, yeah, the one on the right. Yeah. Thanks. Let's see. I don't have a, we have to kind of go slow motion because, well, maybe, let's see if this works. This is a simulation of the December 31, 2005 flood. We all remember that one. That was about a 100-year flood event. And you can see, let's go back to the beginning, the time is elapsed time, or 5:15, 5:20, 5:30 that morning. Let's go back again to the beginning and restart this. Here we are at about 3:00 in the morning, and you can see in the blue where the water is breaking out. You're going to first see it break out. Here you see it breaking out in Ross. You see it growing. That's the movement of the floodwaters that have overtopped and are flowing in the floodplain. It peaked at around 8:00, 8:30 or so. But by now, you can see, we're at about 6:20, you can see all of downtown San Anselmo is flooded, and the waters have also passed Ross, Kentfield, and now entering the upper reaches of the city of Larkspur here. So with this model, we are allowed, we are able to superimpose on this condition certain remedies. And then we can run the model again and see how those remedies, to what degree they fix the problem. Then we can redesign the remedies, rerun the model. It's kind of an iterative process that helps us actually get at a final design solution that's most effective. So I think what might be most relevant to the city of Larkspur would be, you know, a zoom in, a zoom in of this model in the lower reach here in Larkspur. So, Tanya, let's see.
Yeah, while we're waiting for that, Councilmember Morrison.
So James, we're still talking about the detention basins, which are seven of them. And you're talking about the first four up on top, is that?
Well, I'm talking about, the model will be used to evaluate all of them.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
They're all in the model now.
Except for Memorial Park.
Except Memorial Park.
Exactly.
That's not it.
Yep.
So while we're still waiting, I have a question. Do you have a question? I have a question. You know, just looking at your slide with the list of the different projects and the projections for completing environmental review is all pretty much 2018?
Yeah, you know, I'll let Tony and Tanya answer those questions.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt the flow here because we can always come back to it, but.
Yeah, if we can come back, because I think now she's got the model.
Yeah, okay.
I can answer that question.
Well, I think we'll all have some questions about some of those issues.
Okay.
So let's continue. I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah. Well, this is the same model, same output, it's just we now have an aerial photo base map, and we've kind of zoomed in to the upper area of Corder Madera Creek. This is the concrete channel coming down. It empties into the earthen channel, and this is kind of the demarcation between Kentfield and then everything downstream here is Larkspur. So let's just run this. See, this is the water that's overtopped Ross coming down, and then it's flowing, and College of Marin is getting flooded. And then the water is brought back into the channel through this remnant Tamil Pious Creek, Tamil Pious and Murphy Creek, but it can't handle everything. So some water does get passed, and there are some homes in Larkspur down here that are subject to, vulnerable to flooding. What is happening now is there is the Army Corps-Corder Madera Creek project, and that project essentially will, this flood that you're seeing here, we're now on the recessional limb of the flood hydrograph, but that project will focus on Corder Madera Creek Channel down to about this point where it empties into the earthen channel. And as of now, the design objectives are to contain the 25-year flood, which is a smaller flood than this flood, which is the 100-year flood. So even with the core project in place, there would still be, you know, this residual flooding that would occur if we had a 100-year event. So one thing we're going to be looking at with this model and through the LOLE program, the Lower Corder Madera Creek program that Hugh's going to explain, is making sure that any residual flooding that happens, you know, in the Corder Madera, the Corps' project area, can get safely funneled and brought back to the earthen channel, and so that these homes in this Larkspur area are protected. So that's going to be one of, a big mission of ours, is to make sure that the core project dovetails well with this Lower Corder Madera Creek Improvement Project.
And when you say those homes, are you talking about the hillside neighborhood?
I guess that, yeah, I'm not familiar. Is that College Court? I'm not familiar with the names of the neighborhoods, but whatever, it's, yeah, it's right, this one down here. Just on the other side of that Tamil Pious Creek where it goes back in, down in here. See, this is all, I'm going to show you a, you can, these are vectors, flow vectors, that show the direction and the speed, the velocity of flow. And you can see that this water that's left up at Ross has come all the way down through Kentfield, and it's actually the water that eventually would flow out and would hit the upper areas of Larkspur here. Some of it is captured and can be contained in Tamil Pious Creek, you can see, but not all of it. So Hugh's going to show you some of the things that will be looked at in the Lower Corder Madera Creek project to funnel this water back in. Anyway, this model is being used for the core project, and it's going to be used for the Lower Corder Madera Creek Improvement Project. And actually, it's being used in all the projects that Tony listed up there. So that's a description of the model. I'm going to hand it back over to, I guess Hugh, right? Yeah, okay.
So my name's Hugh Davis. I'm the Project Manager of this Lower Corder Madera Creek project. And I'll go through, what I'm going to be talking about really is the latest grant that we received from DWR, which is under the Local Levy Evaluation Program. So the goal of this study is really to determine what we need to do to, you know, increase flood capacity down in Lower Corder Madera Creek. And it's a study at this point. The tasks, I'll go through one at a time, but includes land surveying, hydraulic modeling using the model that Stetson developed and that James talked about, and then geotechnical investigations of areas where we would need some kind of improvements, such as levies, and then assessments of what alternatives can be proposed in the future, so try and get future funding to do actual improvements and to do, construct projects in the future. So this has all been done under the DWR grant, of which it was $450,000. $200,000 is from the Zone Nine flood fee, and $250,000 from the DWR grant. So the first thing we talked about was the bathymetric survey. And so this is the extent of the survey, would be from the end of the concrete channel up at Kentfield, all the way down to the end of the ferry terminal. And this is, this is actually, this is hard to see, it's a little bit fuzzy, but we've done these surveys in the past to try and see what, you know, the conditions of the creek are, and if there's been, where there's been accumulation of sediment that's affecting the capacity of the creek, and even where there's been, you know, degradation. So there's less. And even where there's been, you know, degradation, so, so there's less sediment in the creek in some places. So we did those bathymetric surveys, which means underwater surveys from a boat, and back in 2004, 2010, 2014. Since 2010, since Stetson's CIP report that they, when they did the modeling, they said that they were, you're 100-year without any freeboard, at least in the upper, uppermost thousand feet or so towards the end of the concrete channel. So we, so, so this will be, the first task under this, under this contract will be to repeat this bathymetric survey in 2017. And why that's important is because, you know, we had a pretty wet year last year. And people have noticed maybe that there has been some flushing out of sediment out of the concrete channel and deposited downstream. So the first task would be to do, to look at what the conditions are. And once we get that information, that would feed into the hydraulic model that Stetson developed. And they would determine what the capacity of the creek is at this point. So that, that will be, that's the first, the first task of this, of this project. So I'll show you this, this is kind of from this, this CIP report, the Capital Improvement Project report. And you can see this purple line is really, is the accumulation of sediment since 1986, when the last time that there was a full dredge done. And you can see from this point where we are right now. So in 2004 and 2010, there was, there was bathymetric surveys done. And then in 2014, it was actually less sediment overall in the creek than 2010. And then we'll see in 2018 where we are and see if we, if we're reaching some kind of equilibrium in, in the channel. So this, this will be important, important information to try and, you know, guide the project to see where we need to do work, projects in the future. So these future projects we're looking at is generally, you know, a combination probably, a combination of some dredging, perhaps levies, where dredging is not important because of, you know, because of the tidal reaches especially, where you could dig as deep as you want and it wouldn't provide you any benefit. In the future, you know, due to sea level rise and other issues, we're probably going to have to raise the grade and protect people, in which case you'd have to build some kind of levy or barrier or create some kind of tide gates. And that will be looked at as part of that contract. Other things we're looking at, working with the town, the city of Larkspur, looking at what interior drainage problems are and what we can do to help interior drainage. And that's definitely a big issue in, in this city. And then the other thing we'd look at was tidal prism enlargement. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. So the history of the dredging was done. You can see the initial excavation was done to construct the current alignment of the creek by the Core in 1966. And then there was a full dredge done in 1986 to the full depth of the original Core sections. And since then, really, there's been only a maintenance dredge in 1998. And that was the uppermost section at the stilling basin, which is just downstream of the concrete channel. So that first section is really stilling basin where, where the, where the sediment falls out first time as it, as it comes out of the concrete channel. And right now, we're looking at, you know, reasons why we, we don't generally want to dredge anymore unless we have to. As this is a number of reasons why, you know, it's the expense, it's extremely expensive. It's very difficult to get environmental permits now. You have to take somewhere, you've got to find somewhere to dispose of, of the dredged sediments, which is, you know, quite challenging. And also the benefits are going to be temporary in a lot of ways because it's just going to build back up again. So it's good to look at other alternatives where you can. So this is kind of the locations where they are. You could see the yellow is, is the 1986 full dredge by the Army Corps. And what, what Marin County Flood Control did is that orange piece right at the top. And then there's been some other dredges here, you know, at the Larkspur Marina had done dredging, I think 2015 was their last dredge. And Larkspur Marina, it did some dredging, I think, last year or a couple of years ago, just for their navigation. So one of the things that we try, trying to look at is, is something that was presented, I think, to your board probably a few years ago. And that is the geomorph, geomorphic dredge study. And so what that is, explanation of that is to try and determine what the width and depth of a typical dredge, what the channel should look like for it to be in equilibrium. So it would be, it wouldn't like, sediment wouldn't fall out and it wouldn't get scoured out by the tidal prism behind it. So, you know, the flow, the ebb and flow in and out from the tide, it would always be in the long term, it would be the same section. So if you dig it too big, if you dig it too deep, and then it would fill in. And if you dig it too shallow, then, you know, there's not enough, there's not enough scour at that point. So this is a study that we're going to be actually coming back to you with and do a workshop similar to what we've done over in Santa Fe Nisha and a couple of other areas. So that would be done in conjunction with, with the modeling done by the hydraulic engineers to determine what the best, the best project would be that to be able to provide benefit to your community. This is other, and other areas. So what, one of, one of the main, a lot, big purposes of this grant is to actually look at where, where to provide levies, both for current conditions and also for futures sea level rise. And so we work with the town of Larkspur to look at certain areas. This College Court is the top one. Up there, that's the one that James talked about was, actually, it's flooding at 100 year right now, coming up from, coming from upstream. The other one is, is Tubon Air Road, which connects with the Hillview neighborhood that currently has, had some flooding at certain times. And this Larkspur Isle is another neighborhood that we're looked at. So these will be, these will be assessed by our consultant when we hire them to see if these, these are the best places to spend the money to, to look at the different neighborhoods. So I think that's pretty much it on my, my part. I guess the last thing is the schedule. So the schedule will be, we would be looking at signing the consultant contract to, to do this study in January and hopefully finish, finish with the alternative assessment in April of 2019. And then look for future funding, you know, under, under the same grant program to develop projects.
Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, before you go, a couple of questions on the dredging part.
Yeah.
You know, right now, if you go out there low tide around that Hillview neighborhood, you know, you, you have birds walking out about a third of the way or more. So there, there's a lot of sentiment there.
Yeah.
So at, at what point do you establish that an equilibrium has been created? Because right now, it looks like we're losing that battle.
So like I showed you before, we, we would figure out what, what the, I think we, it doesn't really matter if equilibrium is, is being, you know, is, is currently there or not. If we're, if we're not at, you know, if we need to make improvements for flood control purposes, then we, we would do something, we would assess it at that point. The equilibrium is kind of on that curve. So depending on where that next point is, how much, how much sediment has accumulated since 1986, you'd see on that curve where it flattens out, that's equilibrium at that point.
Yeah, but something is creating the, the situation that allows for either less sediment to accumulate or more of it to be pushed out to the bend. And right now, that doesn't seem to be happening.
I mean, it, well, one thing is like, you know, the sediment might be accumulating in different places, but it's, it's the net that's going to make a difference. So on the outside of the bend, you're going to have more fallout of sediment and that will keep happening. But, but maybe there's less on the interior inside. But we, we would definitely, we'll see that and we'll concentrate a lot of the, of the bathymetric survey on the upstream portions where you can see the sediment.
Yeah, it, it's those inside portions where the sediment is, you know, accumulating.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow on that point, I thought I heard you say a few minutes ago that dredging was probably not a viable option for funding because of funding constraints, environmental permitting and other constraints. So is dredging on the table or is it not on the table?
I mean, it is, it is on the, on the table. I mean, I think before, people used to do, just, just do dredging. But I think nowadays, we're looking at doing other things in conjunction. I don't, I, we're not saying that dredging is not on the table.
Okay, so is it?
In conjunction with other things.
Is it high up on the priority list? Is it down at the bottom of the priority list or is it, where, where does it?
Well, it's good, that's what's going to be determined by the study.
Okay.
The study's going to be done by 20, by the end of 2017? Did I hear that correctly?
No.
2019.
2019.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you go over the explanation of the levies again, please?
Of the levies?
Just that.
Oh, yeah. So these levies here are all, these are all areas that are currently in 100-year floodplain under FEMA. And so we looked at different areas that we could, would, could be protected, you know, by a future project in, in the future. And it would be a combination of probably levies and then also pump stations because you need to be able to get, you, you need to be able to, you know, get the water out as well. So it would be a combination, combination of those two things. Yeah.
Thank you.
Please.
You, you had just mentioned that there are also environmental impact issues associated with, you know, the dredging.
Yeah.
If you get to the point where so much sediment has accumulated so that at low tide, you've effectively have more of a wetland look than a creek, how's that affect your ability to get the environmental clearances to be able to do more dredging?
I mean, the, the environmental agency is very against this, you know, against dredging, as you probably know. And it, it is, you know, quite a challenge to get that past them. But that's kind of why we're looking at this geomorphic dredge, to say that we could find a, a, a section that is in equilibrium that we dredge to for the long term and reduce future dredging needs.
Yeah, but once you start to change the characteristics of the creek so it less, looks less like a creek, I would think that you would want to do the dredging rather than to get to a point where you can't dredge at all.
Well, I mean, I mean, the creek is trying to get to back, back to what it, what it intended to do. So I mean, it's getting back to its natural state. And I mean, if you're saying that we should just keep.
But its natural state creates significant flood risk to our community.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the big issue. So I mean, that's what.
It is the big issue.
Yes, yep. But I mean, to dredge, because, just because we, we wouldn't be able to dredge in the future, I don't know if that's a viable alternative.
Well, if they don't want the money upstream for retention basins, you can send it downstream now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not an easy thing. And so that's why I think we're looking at, you know, different combinations of measures to be able to, to, you know, achieve the same goals.
Okay. Councilmember Morrison, you have any more? I think that's it for now. We may come back at the end of the overall presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tanya Redfield. I'm the Ross Valley Program Manager. And I'm going to move through this part quickly because I know we've been taking a lot of your time. I'm just going to start out by talking about our creek and rain gauge program. This is our network. You can see up here, these symbols here, the blue, the pink, and the darker orangish here, these are existing gauges for rain and stream. And I don't know if any of you have popped into any of the webcams over this past season and watched live the water levels rising at the fire stations in Fairfax and Ross. We had a lot of people going there, both residents and emergency service people watching those cameras and gauges so they could watch the waters rise and be prepared to, you know, sound horns or whatever they need to do to react in an emergency. And so we received a $45,000 grant to expand our network to not only monitor, so we can watch what's happening real time for, for emergency services, but also to collect data so that we can better inform our hydraulic model. And for Larkspur, what we're doing is we're putting in with that grant, a new tide gauge. Right now, we get our tide information from like the San Francisco, the Golden Gate Bridge area. And that's not as, you know, while we can kind of back calculate what the tides are doing by the time they get to us, it's not the same as having a real-time tide gauge here, right here in Larkspur. And we're looking at, working with staff to see if we can put it on the Bonner Bridge. And it would have to be moved once the bridge is under construction, but then replaced again. So, and then quickly, I want to talk about creek maintenance that happened this year here in Larkspur. There were six sites. So we have a creek program as part of the Ross Valley floodwater reduction program. And part of that is we provide funding through the stormwater fees. And then also our staff or creek experts go out with your staff and do walk all the creeks and drainage areas to see, to track and kind of develop a strategy for what needs to be dealt with this year to ensure that drainage to Corner Madera Creek can happen and to prevent flooding at the smaller events. And so that happened in six sites was done. And what, what they do at the beginning of each season in, representatives from each of the towns all come together, their maintenance staff, and they get together and they talk on a watershed, a watershed-wide perspective on what are the priorities and are there some towns that need more funding than others? So total of 50,000. This year, that group collectively agreed to dedicate more funding to Larkspur to deal with some of the sediment removal issues in one of the ditches. I'm going to show you a picture of some before and after. So this is just one example. At Magnolia Avenue, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar, this is what it looked like. And it's probably looked like this for quite a while. And this year, they were able to get in there and, and clean it out. And so this drainage will be much more effective this season. So it'll be interesting to see how it performs as compared to future year, or past years. And then here's just another before and after at Ward Street. You know, this happened in a few areas, clearing like this major brush that could really obstruct the flow of, of water. And so we have examples of this all over the watershed this, this year where we were really able to clean out the channels. And this huge rain event last year was a testament to just how important the maintenance is. Multiple towns reported how they would have flooded in certain areas had they not had, you know, all this maintenance done. So the last thing I'm going to go over is just some upcoming points, meetings and things that are happening. So this weekend, for anyone who's interested in learning more about the Corner Madera Creek project, we're having a site walk. One of the features is to turn Frank Allen, Frederick Allen Park into a riparian corridor in a floodplain, taking out the concrete channel on both sides is the concept. And not only creating more of a recreational and community asset, but also providing additional flood control, also with the removal of that fish ladder too, that's a major obstruction. So we're going to be doing a site walk with anyone who's interested from the community.
Where will, where will that be initiated?
Sorry, so it is going to be right in Ross, right at the post office in downtown Ross is where we're going to start. And we're set up, hopefully no rain's going to sneak up on us. So that's where we'll start. And we'll be there from 10 to noon doing site tours and walks and answering any questions that folks may have. And you can see that there are a number of other things, you know, coming up. I don't want to go through them all just for the sake of time. I want to make sure we have time for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the council? I don't have any, not any questions per se. Actually, I have a lot of questions, but I don't think this is probably the place to get into all the details. So I look forward to participating in some of your upcoming meetings.
Sure, and we'd be happy to come out and meet with you individually anytime to, to talk more about your questions.
I certainly would appreciate it because I think that may be a more useful forum to get some of the questions I have answered. Partly, my questions are, would be driven by our reflection on the length of time that has gone by since the original flood fee was imposed over 10 years ago, with very little demonstrable progress in terms of actual physical construction of projects. And in fact, little progress in terms of really providing a concrete delineation, probably a bad word to use in this context, concrete, but a specific delineation of what the projects truly are. So I think we, we all look forward to participating in your future programs and trying to get some answers to these questions and really encourage progress to be made to address the very serious risk of flooding that we have in our community.
Yeah, comment will take in. The, that first slide that we showed shows the eight projects that are currently underway. And so we look forward to an opportunity and so we look forward to an opportunity to talk to you more about the significant benefit that those pose, and that it's pretty exciting that a number of those projects will be constructed by 2020, the latest 2023. So we are excited that we do have some, some great progress to, to talk more about.
Okay, that's terrific. Thank you very much. Well, thank you all for making this presentation. We have a busy agenda, I think, for the rest of the program, so why don't we move on to item, agenda item number three, which is public comment. This is a time for members of the public to address the city council regarding items that are not on the agenda or that are listed as part of the consent calendar. Please approach the podium, state your name and where you live. Individuals have three minutes to speak, and I will be running a timer. Thank you.
Is this somebody's? It stays here, okay. This, Joan Lundstrom, I, I used to chair the Corder Madera Creek Flood Control District, so this sounds like in my youth, I heard some of these things.
Yeah.
And I'd love to show, send you the slide that former mayor Ron Arles of the big marsh that's out his window by the Hillview Gardens that, and sometimes it looks like you can walk across. So I hope you don't take up dredging, sorry for the slide. Okay. I'm here as secretary to the Larkspur Community Foundation, and I'd like to briefly update you on what the foundation has accomplished this year, our fourth year in existence. We started out the year partnering with you, the city, for the Second Annual Heart of Larkspur Volunteer Event, honoring about 100 volunteers from local nonprofits, boards, and commissions, and we look forward to co-hosting again next year. Community foundations are all about awarding grants within the community. Our current grants budget of $15,000 comes solely through donations, focusing on matching grants so our funds stretch further. Here are the grants that we've awarded this year. A grant to the Shureg Center for Brain Injury Recovery, part of the Larkspur community for many years on North Magnolia Avenue to construct a new interior office for counseling their clients. Another grant to the Historic Lark Theater to upgrade and brighten their signature marquee, which also included painting and reinforcing the sign. The Marine IJ credited us, saying, "Foundation extracts the lark from the dark." A grant to the City of Larkspur to replant the entrance sign area to Niven Park opposite the Greenbury Fire Station. Presently, there are no plants around the entrance. This will occur next spring. We also donated to Redwood High School Safe and Sober Grant Night. And most recently, the Friends of the Larkspur Library requested funds from us to replace and refurbish the heavily-used chairs in the reading room. Request granted. Consistent with the foundation's mission to sustain Larkspur's historic small-town character, grants for projects designed to protect Larkspur's history are available. Then on a different side, as a tax-exempt nonprofit, the foundation acts as fiscal agent for small local projects wanting to receive tax credit for their donations. How does this work? For example, two years ago, neighbors formed a group called Helping Heatherwood Park to uppergrade that park. Donors wrote a check to the Larkspur Community Foundation earmarked for the park, and they got the tax credit. We held the money until the project was complete, then distributed to the City Public Works for the park improvements. They gathered about $45,000 for that. This year, as fiscal agent, we helped with the basketball court in Heatherwood Park. It was a Larkspur Eagle Scout pro, pro, project of Landon Gregg, and he raised funds to renovate the basketball court. We gave him a grant for $1,000, he raised $4,000. And he had some surplus, which then he turned around and donated back to Heatherwood Park. So they're, they're raising more money. The sand volleyball courts, a group of volleyball enthusiasts have been raising funds to refurbish the Piper Park volleyball carts. And then Piper Park Trees, for several years, the foundation has held funds raised by Baltimore Park Neighbors specifically for planting trees in Piper Park. The sixth-grade class at Henry C. Hall Middle School wanted to plant trees in the park to reduce global warming, but needed funding. Larkspur Public Works approached the foundation to release the funds for this project. Mature trees were planted by the students, the teacher, Baltimore Park Neighbors, the foundation board members, and Public Works. The newest project, the Larkspur Native Plant Corridor fundraising drive was just started this month by Angela Curley, a businesswoman in town, working with the city and the California Native Plant Society to create a downtown beautification project in the median on Magnolia Avenue. They just planted there.
Joan, thanks. If you could kind of bring it to.
This is it.
Quickly. Thanks.
Now we're, we're reaching out especially to the council and the boards and commissions. We need all your support for community funds graciously received. That's it.
That's terrific. Thank you very much for that great report. We appreciate it. Anyone else from the public who would like to provide a comment at this time? Please, and state your name and where you live, please.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Friday, 66 Meadowwood, and a 30-year resident of Larkspur, concerned citizen as well as co-president of the Friends of the Library. I'm here to read a joint letter from the Larkspur Library Board, the Larkspur Library Foundation, as well as the Friends of the Library. Dear council members, on behalf of our library community, which we jointly serve, our organizations collectively asked the City of Larkspur to install forthwith a permanent sign at the Rose Lane Parcel to replace the temporary sign which was recently removed. The sign should indicate that this space is reserved for the new home of the Larkspur Library and Community Center. This sign is an important signal to our community which states that this space is reserved for a new library and community facility, and that plans for its development are underway. We suggest the wording of this sign to read "Future Home of the Larkspur Library and Community Center. Thank you for attention to this matter cordially in the signatures." We're going to send a copy to you, Mr. Mayor, as well as to our city manager, and we thank you very much for your time and listening to this joint request. But I did want to ask, if appropriate, did you feel that we needed to put this item on the agenda as, for discussion in a future meeting?
I think actually, could the city manager provide a comment? Because I think you had some thoughts about the signage for that.
I'm not sure who, who's, if the council wants us to put a sign up, you should probably clarify that. I'd been hoping that at some point a new group's going to emerge and perhaps take over the 501(c)(3) that the city created for the purpose of fundraising for the property, and that that group would then propose an appropriate sign at that time. But if the council wants to sign up sooner than that, I just think staff would like some direction, which this would not be the appropriate time to do that.
And that's fine, that's fine. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else from the public like to take advantage of this opportunity to provide a, a comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number four, approval of the consent calendar. We haven't had any requests to take anything off the consent calendar, so could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. We'll move on to agenda item number five, city manager's oral report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, just a few items for you this evening. First, I want to say I have myself and my staff, thank you to the community for the expression of trust in passing Measure B. I hope I'm not taking anything from the council, but I get to go first tonight, so, you know, we are already planning how to demonstrate that the trust is well-placed, and particularly, Public Works Director Julian Skinner and I sort of looked at each other after we saw the results and realized, you know, we have a lot of work to do, so. But we're very appreciative, I know the council is, and you'll probably speak to that yourselves, but we just, as a staff, want to say thank you because we do view Measure B's passage as a statement that we have been doing things the right way and the public's noticed, so. Couple other items. I did want to make sure the public's aware that for the second year in a row, we're doing the Food for Fines program through the library, and want to acknowledge our library director who's here, Janice Ackle, who launched that program last year with the SF Marin Food Bank, so you can come down to the library and donate your non-perishable food items, and you can have your library fines waived. And you can come down and you can give us food even if you don't have any library fines, we'll take it as well. But good program, and raised an incredible amount of food last year, and we fully expect to be successful again this year. You just passed on the consent calendar, the first time, for the first time, the use of interest drawn out of the endowment that you instructed staff to set up with the Zimmer Trust. I just wanted to call some attention to that again, the generous donation from the Zimmer Estate gentleman who left money to the Larkspur Library, the Mill Valley Library, and the Corder Madera Library. To date, we've received from the estate 661,000. We're actually anticipating one more disbursement of funds from the estate to go into the endowment. And once that last investment, last amount comes in, we'll really be looking at how to generate even more interest out of the endowment while keeping that principle sound. But very exciting for the library staff to know that there's this annual sum of money coming in for these one-time needs. And then lastly, an important announcement, public service announcement, it is raining, and we do have sandbags. So if folks want, need sandbags, the two locations to get them are in Piper Park, and then also we have some at the intersection of Diane Lane and Midway Road, and these are our usual locations that we provide for sand and sandbags. And we encourage folks who need or want those to come on down.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, I do. When does the food for funds begin? When do they start collecting?
I think it's begun already.
It's already begun.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll just say one thing, since you brought it up, which is to thank us for the hard work put in by the council members on passing Measure B. I just would like to thank you and Julian and everybody else on staff for all your hard work in reaching out to the community, educating the community on the importance of getting that funding for road repair and rehabilitation. And I also want to thank the community for, for their endorsement of that measure, their confidence in both the city council and in city staff to be good stewards of those funds going forward into the future. And I'm really anxious and looking forward to getting things going and seeing all those roads be wonderful again. So, thank you.
Well, and I appreciate the chance to piggyback on the community's trust in the five of you, and I think certainly Measure B's passage so substantially is a strong statement about the trust they have in the five of you.
Well, we all did a good job. Yes.
I was going to save my comments for ours, but, you know, since we're on this topic, I, I think some, besides seat managers, you know, public works director, our finance director also has a part in this because one of the things we did in order to really show that the money was being spent the way it was, was all the level of detail that she put into, one, creating a segregated fund for Measure C, and all line item detail associated with it, so you can basically see, you know, literally every check. And I had one person say, you know, I, I just want to know that it was spent right, so you give them a soundbite, and you go, well, how do you prove it? So you give them all this information, and you go, well, 40 pages is too much. You know, well, you can't have it both ways, but the, you know, what I'm trying to illustrate is that you can take everything down to the individual detail level and account for all the funds that were spent specifically for what we did on Measure C.
Great outcome.
It was a great outcome, so I think we all be proud of that and proud of our community for supporting it more than anything else. So that will conclude that agenda item, and I think we can move on to number six, which is council members' oral reports and comments. Councilmember Morrison, either one of you?
I, I just have one quick item. It's from Councilmember Way. She said the Central Marin Fire and Central Marin Police are hosting a community meeting on December 7th, which is a Thursday, that's at 6:00 PM at the Corder Madera Community Center, and is to discuss the wildland fire preparedness within the communities of Larkspur and Corder Madera.
I do. Larry and I, we sit on the Central Marin Police Authority Council, and I met with our police chief, Norton, and as I left after the meeting, I noticed a bulletin board, and that bulletin board was full of thank you notes. So it was, it was quite a treat to, it was like a hallmark moment for me. So I took a photo of one, and I wanted to share it all with you. It says, "When we woke to the orange glow on October the 8th, we had no idea the disaster that would befall our community and county. For the next few days, we feared the fires in the near distance would engulf our own neighborhoods, and they did. The sounds of the screaming sirens and the roaring aircrafts in the week that followed rattled our nerves, but also reminded us that we had an army of brave and dedicated souls protecting us. We were comforted knowing that all of you were here for us, coming to our rescue and staying with us until we were safe. Thank you so much for caring and for fighting so hard for us. You will be forever in our hearts." There must have been over 50 of these notes of, of just appreciation for their time and effort, so it was right, quite a treat to, to walk past that bulletin board. I also want to continue with the Neighborhood Response Group. I got a letter from Lee and John Howard, who are the leaders of the Neighborhood Response Group, and they are also having a leadership, a leader forum on November the 19th from 4:00 to 5:30 at the Corder Madera Community Center, and they're going to have a general session, they're going to have lessons learned from the Nevada 5th Drills, how the Neighborhood Response Group might function in wildfire situations, and possible alert methods, along with the forum on, you said, right, Larry, on December the 7th? Is that the one you talked about?
Yes, correct.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
Great. Seeing nothing else, I have nothing specific to report myself tonight, so we will move on to agenda item number seven, which is our public hearing. And we have two items in this agenda, 7.1 and 7.2, they're related. Are we going to take them together or we should do them separately? Okay. Agenda item 7.1 is adoption of ordinance number 1024, amending the Larkspur Municipal Code in various respects regarding regulations concerning the availability of medicinal and non-medical cannabis in Larkspur. If we could hear a staff report, please.
Just give me one second. I want to bring the attention to the dais first to note that we have three late mail letters from residents in Larkspur who were not able to attend tonight's meeting. All three of them have expressed support for the moratorium on commercial cannabis sales and oppose any outdoor growing for personal growth at, of residents.
And we've received, I think, those by email as well.
Okay, thank you. On February 15th and September 6th in 2017, the council received presentations from staff regarding the laws, the new state laws permitting personal use, cultivation, and commercial sales of cannabis. At the conclusion of the discussion, the council gave staff some direction, first to prepare an interim ordinance to temporarily prohibit commercial cannabis businesses from locating and operating in Larkspur, and second to prepare an ordinance addressing personal cultivation of cannabis. In anticipation of further public outreach and participation, the council requested staff to prepare two versions of the ordinance, one that prohibited outdoor growing and one that permits it. On October 4th, the council adopted the interim ordinance number 1021, which established a 45-day moratorium on all commercial cannabis businesses, and this matter was again scheduled to be revisited on, under item 7.2. With regard to new regulations addressing personal cultivation of cannabis and the deliveries that may occur from businesses located outside Larkspur, staff prepared two versions of ordinance 2014 for the council's consideration. The ordinance proposes several amendments to the municipal code, including the The ordinance proposes several amendments to the municipal code, including the personal, the addition of chapter 9.56, regulations pertaining to personal cultivation of medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis. Under version one, this new chapter would permit a residence, a resident of a premise who is at least 18 years of age, and either a qualified patient or a primary caregiver, or an adult who is at least 21 years of age, to engage in indoor cultivation of cannabis. Outdoor cultivation is prohibited. It provides standards for indoor cultivation, it requires that a yard be securely fenced if they are growing cannabis within a detached accessory structure, it limits the number of plants to six per household, which is consistent with state law, it requires there be no visible evidence of cannabis cultivation from a private right-of-way park or school, and it requires any modification of the premise comply with current applicable building, electrical, and fire codes. Under version two, it's almost exactly the same, but it also permits outdoor cultivation of cannabis in a secure yard. It also prohibits cannabis cultivation from being visible from any public right-of-way public park or school. With regard to commercial deliveries in Larkspur, ordinance 1024 proposes the addition of chapter 5.40, delivery of cannabis and cannabis-related products. Generally, this chapter requires a delivery business to acquire all applicable state licensing and a city business license, and it requires the vehicle operator and vehicle to be directly affiliated with a licensed commercial facility. And last, the ordinance proposes to amend title 5, chapter 5.32, to add cannabis delivery services to a list of business license applications that must be vetted by the police department prior to being issued. So we recommend you make a determination as to whether to prohibit or allow outdoor cultivation for personal use, waive the first reading of the proposed ordinance, and hold a public hearing on the proposed regulations, and continue this matter to December 6, 2017, for a second reading and adoption. That concludes my report.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from city council? Please.
I guess at this point, we kind of left off the last discussion, and there were questions about enforceability specifically with, you know, it being treated as a nuisance. So it was really more of a nuisance abatement issue. So, you know, has there been any additional thought given to how much work would be created if you prohibit outdoor cultivation versus permitting it?
Well, certainly, we've had a lot of discussions, but we don't have any, you know, empirical evidence to decide exactly what this will mean. By permitting it in the rear yard, you do run the possibility that it will be visible, and we would have to enforce that it can't be, and that they might smell it. But we have not included odor as part of the things that violate this ordinance. We have not even addressed odor as something that is something we would enforce against.
This is all enforceable through, going to be through the police department, correct?
Correct.
It's not a zoning?
And I did forward the ordinance to the police department twice, and they have reviewed it and appeared to be comfortable with the final versions.
Or final version of which, either both of them?
Both.
Maybe the chief can provide some additional comment on what he feels the burden of enforcement will be on permitting versus prohibiting?
Hi. I'm not quite sure what you're looking for with that last request, the permitting versus prohibiting.
Well, if we permit it, then there'll be issues associated with nuisance abatements on that side, and then if you prohibit, there's also violations of that portion if people decide to grow even though it's prohibited.
Right. I see what you're saying. I'm not sure, you know, which one will create, you know, more time or work for us. We're generally as a police department against the outdoor cultivation, just because it makes it more accessible for someone to steal it from or to enter the yard. And I know it's still not supposed to be visible from the public, but I feel we're going to have more issues with calls for service if outdoor growing is permitted, just because it's going to be more visible, whether it's from a neighbor's yard or not, and they're going to call us. In terms of enforcement, it really is a nuisance, and luckily, we don't have to deal with too much of that, but generally, that is enforced with us in coordination with the city. And, you know, the rules are, there is work for all parties involved at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? No. Councilmember Morrison? Since no, there are no further questions from the city council, I think we can open it up to the public for public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to provide some input on this particular matter? Mr. Holmes?
James Holmes, Larkspur, as between version one and version two, I would certainly recommend version one, prohibiting outdoor cultivation. I'm convinced that when Larkspur residents, they didn't vote to increase the role of pot in the community, they voted to decrease the role of pot in the courts. And so I think that prohibiting outdoor cultivation is consistent with that. I do think that, in fairness, there's an alternative, or I should say, middle ground, and that would be to allow cultivation only if it's not visible either off-site or on-site. And that would, because an argument could be made that if people can't see it either from the public or from private areas, well, then there's no harm nor foul. And of course, there's a large variety of lots in Larkspur, and some of them are large enough that it would make no difference whatsoever to grow marijuana on it. So, I mean, if it were desired to have a middle ground there, I'd recommend that. I could give you more details as to where to, as to amend, where to amend that, to add, you'd amend the reference to permitting, to prohibiting, I'm sorry, you would amend version two to say that it could not be visible from either the public or from a private off-site area. And one other just technical point I'd make, if you do want to go with amendment two or version two, I'd question whether or not you would want to require the entire parcel to be fenced as the ordinance draft currently provides. I think you'd only want that part fenced where the pot is located, so as, for example, if they're growing it in the back, no need to fence the front. But in any event, if you're not interested in that middle ground to sort of maximize freedom without impinging on neighbors, then I would go with version one. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else in the public that would like to provide a comment on this item specifically? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Any comments or questions? I think we need to provide you first and foremost with some direction on which of the two options we need.
Right. So my mind has not changed since we've had this last discussion. In fact, I'm even more determined to go for version one. I've asked friends and neighbors within Larkspur, and not one person said that it should be grown outside. They're afraid of the easy access, as our chief mentioned, along with the aroma, and if it could be delivered, why even have it outside? So I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Larry, and Kevin, you want to continue the discussion?
I'd like to just make sure we hear from all of us up here, partly because we don't have a full slate of city council, and if we can take action on this matter tonight, it will be without the benefit of the views of our absent council members. So, that said, if there is consensus among the three of us, that doesn't bother me quite so much. Councilmember Chu?
I think I'm going to provide some extra comment for the benefit of our audience tonight, since we have some scouts here who are here to listen to a civic issue where they want to hear two sides of an issue. Unfortunately, we haven't had too many people want to support the cultivation thing. To James's point, I believe one of the items that's on here is that even with indoor cultivation, it can't be visible from a public right-of-way. So that part's already covered. If, just, I just have one question, a couple of questions of clarification now. If somebody has an indoor accessory structure in the yard, is that covered under the indoor one? Is that considered indoor grow?
It is.
Okay.
It's permitted either in the residence or in a detached accessory structure on the property.
So shed, something like that?
Yeah. Right. Now, in Colorado, one of the things that they do to mitigate against the issue with odor is that the structure has to be sealed. You know, you can't leave windows open. So is that something you've considered? Because if we have, whether it's indoors or not, if it's venting from where it's being grown, then you're still going to get the complaints from the neighbors.
Well, we were trying to follow what we thought was the council's direction and not sort of get into people's private business. You seem to feel that you didn't want to dictate how they grew this product within their home. And when you impose rules such as windows must be closed, you then put the city in the position of having to enforce that rule. So we were trying to sort of write the rules to be a bit more out of people's backyards and homes. If you want to create more stringent rules, we can.
Okay. Here's what it's going to come down to in the end, is that there are two objections about why you don't want to permit cultivation. It's already allowed indoors, so we have to accept that. But one is the accessibility to youth, and the other one is things smell like skunk in your neighborhood, or at least in the immediate vicinity. I think six plants is not going to permeate through the whole neighborhood like it does with other commercial grows. But it still leaves us open to complaints of odor, so if that becomes what you might call a nuisance, how do we deal with that?
We have not included odors as a nuisance within this particular ordinance.
Yeah, but just in general, let's say someone leaves their trash out, or there's something associated with an odor that somebody starts to complain about. How is that handled now?
I'm not aware of us having to enforce anything like that.
We'd have to double-check, but we don't believe that the municipal code contains a current prohibition just on odors. In the garbage case, if that were occurring, most likely, they would not be following the requirement to use the solid waste services that are mandated, so it would be addressed through that, not directly through the odor prohibition, which the municipal code doesn't contain.
It doesn't contain a specific odor prohibition, but don't we have a general nuisance provision that could be enlisted if necessary?
I don't, though, that it covers odors, though. We'd have to, we'd have to check.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's kind of like a common law definition. I mean, it can be anything that causes irritation to.
But that would be a private nuisance, not necessarily a public nuisance. The public nuisance has to be defined in the municipal code.
Okay. Well, you know, much the way there are measures of what's quote-unquote "too noisy," or at least you set some kind of decibel level, much the way that we have with the noise ordinance, you know, I'm not suggesting an odor ordinance, but there are, somebody has thought about this, and I guess that's the nice part about having several other states go before us. And, you know, it's been suggested, like in Colorado, that if you have one part in seven, be measurable to that particular odor associated with marijuana, then it needs to, it needs a charcoal filter or a carbon filter to remove that. So, you know, I don't know if we need to go that route right now. All I'm suggesting is that we still have an area where we have a potential place for complaints if we only restrict it to indoor grows.
If I could chime in, Mr. Mayor, we, from time to time, get complaints from residents about the behaviors of their neighbors, and we have to gently ask them to go talk to their neighbors. And I assume a lot of them don't come back because they work it out as neighbors find ways to work out conflict. Tying this back to the mayor's question and the response from the city attorney, from time to time, we're aware that they can't work it out, and then there's a civil matter that takes place. And I would urge caution in trying to make this anything other than a civil dispute because policing odors is just going to be nearly impossible. We have a hard enough time policing noise, and I would just ask that we leave odor debate to a dispute between parties about the enjoyment of their property and let it be a civil matter.
I mean, I agree with you on that statement, and I think the sheer reason for prohibiting it makes it so that it's more prohibiting outdoors, makes it easier to enforce because if they do it, then all you do is tear it out. But if you permit it, you have all these other ancillary issues that come up. You know, there's going to be a whole process involved, and there's no way to really objectively determine if somebody is in violation, especially with the odor thing. So this whole discussion is really about a lot of things that we have with what people characterize as quality of life, and, you know, we continue to struggle with this in a lot of different ways.
And Larry, that's a great point, but my neighbor likes to use chicken manure, and the odor is terrible, but you just go and you talk, and like Dan mentioned, you hope he can work it out, and that's going to hopefully be the situation in some of these cases. So I hear what you're saying, but I really think Dan's correct, that hopefully neighbors can be neighborly and friendly and take care of the problem themselves. I hear what you're saying.
Okay. Anything else, Councilmember Morrison, or just responding to that issue? And I agree with that 100%, so this is a, this is a matter of disputes between neighbors, if it's anything, and it should be resolved in the same way that those disputes get resolved in the ordinary course of things. So you still need direction. I think we got it from Councilmember Morrison. I endorse that direction, which is adopt version one. Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, I do, too.
Okay. So you now have, I think, the direction from us, so.
Do I need to read the ordinance, or are we okay?
If you're prepared to move forward tonight, you can introduce, wave first reading and introduce version one of the ordinance.
Okay. I will wave the first reading and introduce ordinance, right? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Number 1024, an ordinance of the state of Larkspur amending title nine, adding chapter 9.56 of the Larkspur Municipal Code to regulate personal cultivation of cannabis, and amending title five, adding chapter 5.40, and amending 5.34 to require state and local licensing and certification by the chief of police for business that can deliver medical and non-medical cannabis from outside of Larkspur.
Okay. Does that do the trick in terms of a motion?
It does. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. So that'll take us to 7.2, which is adoption of an ordinance, ordinance 1025 extending the interim ordinance 1021, establishing a temporary prohibition on medical and non-medical cannabis-related businesses from locating and operating in the city of Larkspur, pending the analysis and consideration of new zoning amendments and other regulations appropriate for this new industry. Can we hear a staff report on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. As I noted in my previous presentation, the council had directed staff to prepare a ordinance, an interim ordinance, that would temporarily prohibit any commercial activity in businesses within the city of Larkspur. And on September or October 4th, you adopted the interim ordinance for a 45-day period. Tonight, we have brought back the new interim ordinance 1025, which would extend the interim ordinance for another 22 months and 15 days, while the city continues to explore appropriate regulation and policies related to the cannabis industry that would be best for the city of Larkspur. So we recommend that you adopt ordinance 1025.
Okay. And just a clarification, although this would extend the ordinance out for 22 months? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying? We could take action before that if we chose to do so. So this is just a default?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add one procedural point, which is that this type of ordinance requires a four-fifth vote of the council. But ordinances also require a minimum of three votes, and so since only three of the council members are here tonight, it will require a unanimous vote of the members present in order to adopt this ordinance.
But we can't adopt it if we do get that unanimous vote?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the council on this item? Do we have any members from the public who would like to provide comment? And again, this is just item 7.2. We've already addressed 7.1. Seeing none, I think we can bring it back to the council. And unless there's any further discussion, we can take a motion.
Okay. I'll move to extend our current moratorium on commercial uses of cannabis and related businesses an additional 22 and a half months.
Through adoption of ordinance 1025.
Yeah, I was looking for that. Through adoption of ordinance 1025.
Okay. And if that's a satisfactory motion?
It is.
Then can we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. We're making progress. That's right. And I think with that, we will move on to agenda item number eight, which are business items. We have a couple of those. A little more fun here. Agenda item 8.1 concerns a request for an award of a community and art grant to the Friends of the Library through adoption of resolution 7517. Can we hear a staff report on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Several years ago, the council determined to begin allocating within the budget of the Transit Occupancy Tax Fund, the TOT Fund, $10,000, which would be used to award for a grant or grants to support the community in the arts. The program was set up as one that the council would simply review requests on a case-by-case basis, and there's never been any additional guidelines adopted. There hasn't really been any need to do that, because up until now, we've only ever received requests from one entity, the Lark Theater, which has typically made their requests later in the fiscal year. But this year, you did receive qualified requests from the Friends of the Library for funds, and so you now have before you that request. And our recommendation is that you either approve a resolution granting that request or provide some other direction to staff, which is essentially how you've operated the program for the last few years. So you have the request from the Friends outlining the manners in which they would put the money to work. And I now pass it back to you for you to discuss how you want to proceed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Please.
I have some statements to make, more than a question. So Friends of the Larkspur Library, Barbara and Catherine and Janice, it's so exciting that it is being re-motivated and just, you know, brought to everyone's attention. So thank you for putting your hard work and efforts. And I went to the 13 Reasons Why, that was an incredible book discussion, and Jay Asher, he just did a great presentation. Summer of Love events, fantastic. Your weekly TED Talks, how exciting is that? And your many, many children events. And congratulations also on the Zimmer Trust donation. That's very exciting. Dan, it's, I've also reached out to Ellie, the Lark Theater, and she is, the theater is also growing rapidly, and they've done a lot of outreach programs. They do the five museum exhibits on the screen, they do five Broadway productions, they do the annual high school student filmmaking showcase. They also had, they opened the doors for movies and popcorns to the fire evacuees and to host families with the Red Cross. So they, like yourselves, they do a lot for our community. They rely on our donation to keep them alive also, to continue doing these programs. So Dan, I have a question for you. Is it possible to increase the community and art grant to more than $10,000?
Well, are there funds or are funds in reserve that you could draw upon? There is no more money in the TOT Fund budget that you approved.
Okay, so it's $10,000 is, okay.
That fund's primary expenditure each year for the last two years has been money that you're paying to the Chamber of Commerce for some of the work that it's doing, that the city views as promoting business and economic development. This grant is actually, I think, the second largest expenditure. The funds are pretty, the expenditure's been fairly modest in the TOT Fund. There is a currently reserved to that fund. So if you wanted to allocate more money, you could certainly consider, consider that for this year. But it's not budgeted. And the amount you've budgeted is, is, I think, pretty close to what we would anticipate I'll come into that fund, based on the way the council created the fund and the way revenues pass into the fund.
Okay. So I just wanted to talk with the council, you know, maybe we can increase the fund or, or share the fund with the Lark Theater, because they, once again, they really rely on this grant. So I'd just like to hear both of your opinions on that, if you even have anything to say.
Councilmember two?
The money currently comes out of the TOT. And I guess, you know, do we have anything left over? I mean, it's fully allocated, and we usually distribute it amongst a lot of different organizations that are tied to either business development or something that, you know, we have as a community event. So I guess really what it comes down to in the end is that if you have a finite amount of dollars in the TOT, then we would need to go back and review from our own general fund budget whether we want to put more into these community events. And that would probably be, I'd have to think about that. I'd like to know where that would come from in the bigger scheme of, you know, where Dan has money. I mean, when you look at our budget discussions from June, for example, he was potentially running a deficit. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, that's where we have to have the discussion, I think. You know, I'd love to be able to give community organizations more money, and, you know, now we just have to figure out, okay, well, where will we get that money?
Okay. Well, I understood your, your comment is twofold. One was, is there an opportunity to get more money? Or is there an opportunity to share? I assume there's no constraint on our ability to make a decision to allocate money among different.
This is a fully discretionary line item that the council's retained the, you make the decision each year about whether to disperse this money.
And this is, this is the time to make that decision?
Well, because you have this request, and like I said, there's not any specific guidelines here. So you, the items before you, you can decide to disperse some or all of the money now. You can do what you want.
And Ellie was going to be here, but she just had her hip replaced two days ago, so she couldn't come. So I would, I would like to recommend to share the fund, to share the grant, and do $5,000 to the Friends of the Larkspur Library and $5,000 to the Lark Theater. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. How much, how much does the Lark Theater get now? Because they were getting something where we were cosponsoring a film festival.
Yeah, maybe that would be a little historical context of, up until about 2012, the city was allocating most of the TOT Fund each year to subsidize a number of activities that were tied to the downtown. One of them was activities at the Lark Theater. When the decision was made to end that program, the Lark Theater asked you to come up with some program that they could make requests, because they were doing a children's film festival, which I think is still one of the primary reasons that they pursue the money.
They do, they thank God it's Friday for Young Families. And they also do the Great Broadway Sing-Along and Annual Dog Film Festival for the kids, and the Marin Symphony with the kids. I don't mean to interrupt you, Dan. I just wanted to throw that out.
No, that's okay. Just, I think what Councilmember Chu was alluding to is, the original concern of the Lark Theater was that they had a once-a-year festival where high school students, for the most part, used the Lark as a venue to show films they had created, short, five- and 10-minute, I guess a few of them were longer, it tended to be five, 10-minute films. And the city's donation, at least initially, was being used to co-sponsor that event. And I think it's, again, it's still an event that they use some of the money for. But I think as the Lark's mission has, has broadened in some respects as well, then they've drawn, they've placed the money elsewhere too. Oh, I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to get kind of a context, you know, in the absence of the report we usually get, you know, how we're currently allocating our TOT funds. And I just don't remember.
Off of my memory, the TOT's fund, and for the benefit of folks who are wondering what we're talking about, the council years ago decided to take a portion of what comes in as TOT tax or hotel tax. And in this case, it's from one hotel, which is the Courtyard. You take a portion of that tax and you put it in the TOT Fund every year. And the idea was to build up a fund that the council would have available to promote activities that brought people to Larkspur. That was the idea of setting up the fund initially. So the vast majority of the fund goes back into business activities that are designed to bring people into Larkspur. And for the last couple of years, you've invested heavily in things the chamber's doing that are to that purpose. The fund has been bringing in anywhere from $50,000, $80,000 as revenue each year, based on the setup that you've created. That's typically been its share. It's, as we've talked about in other venues, the hotel's been doing extremely well, so revenues have continued to climb. But we typically have recommended to you to kind of be in that, that target for what revenues would be. And then you've been turning around and giving roughly $50,000 to $60,000 into pure act, what we'd call the chamber slash economic development investments. We've done occasional charges of one-time activities that the city has done into that fund, and so we, we parked some of the money for that purpose. And then we've had this $10,000 allocation for this purpose. So that's, I think, without seeing the budget in front of me, I think that's a, I think it's around 70 to 80 budgeted this year. You know, we'll true that up at the end of the year. And that's why the fund has a bit more reserve than we anticipated, is the hotel's done really well. But we also consider that money to set, to keep holding some of that reserve, so the next time the economy's down, we can still invest in, in these activities. If we deplete the reserve, we wouldn't have that money for the next downturn.
Fair enough. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. You know, I think like anything else, when you look at discretionary funding, you know, at any level, there is what seems to eventually become a reliance on that money. And, and we saw that happen with Marin Community Association, where.
The Food and Flower Festival. It had become very, very much dependent on the city subsidy.
Yeah. And, you know, it's good when you have a surplus. I guess if there isn't the expectation that there is such a reliance on the money year over year, that if we can't pay it out, that they would have, then as part of their contingency, have to find a way to backfill it. You know, if we do have the excess this year, you know, do we decide to use and pay an extra $5,000? Or do we do what Dan has been doing, which is kind of to create a smooth line where things that we fund on an annual recurring basis can still be funded in a, you know, a not-so-good year?
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Is this a matter that should be open to the public for comment? Yeah. So unless there's anything else from the council, if we could hear from members of the public who would like to speak on, speak on this item?
It's Barbara Friday, and again, Catherine Pike and I are presidents, co-presidents of the Friends of the Library. We just took over in September. We're still getting up to speed. But I did want to assure you, I'm sensitive to the issues that you raised, certainly. But I did want to, I perhaps wanted to just point out some, some quantitative information that Janice may not have shared with you yet. It's been published as early as this week and was presented at the Larkspur Library Board on Monday. So is it okay if I step forward and hand these out? Okay, great.
Yeah, just hand it to our city clerk, please.
Thank you. So generally, I want to say that for 2018, we do anticipate kicking off a successful membership drive, so that we can provide a small but more predictable source of revenues to the library. However, I'd like to call your attention to the sheet in front of you, because the library's budget this year is, you know, a full $13,000 less than it was last year. And what the library's been doing all across the board, from population served to number of registered children, to print materials, I mean, look at the incredible increase that has occurred over this, this last year, including, and then again, to the preschool programs and the number of preschool attendance and number of programs. It's just been, and this doesn't even count what Ann mentioned, which was their incredible work at the Tamil Pious and extending the library beyond its, its physical walls. So I think, I think that it's just amazing, the work that has been done this year with few, with, with less funds, and that any, you know, donation to get through this, what has been a really quite a tight year, would be very helpful. The library's a great success story, using existing resources, but it is stretched. The grant will help sustain programs, which are in such high demand and valued by the community so much. A mother mentioned to me yesterday that she would bring her preschooler to the library every day if there was a reading program offered every day. So I think the demand is really just off the charts. And your support, you know, builds, our Larkspur brand is a vibrant community, both intellectually and, you know, communally, you know, in terms of community spirit. And the last thing I'd say is, have you seen this brochure that was just put together, and it listed, you know, on a, on a day, on a day-by-day basis, exactly what programs have been started? So I'll call that to your attention, and I say thank you for your support and for your flexibility. And we look forward to, you know, working as the foundation for, as the Friends of the Library to sustain these programs in the future.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public that'd like to offer comment? Sure, please.
Janice A. called Library Director. I just keep this brief, I would just like to mention that this last year, we put on 204 programs. And we don't have any line item for programs within our budget, library budget. Most public libraries will have something, we don't have anything. Therefore, we are really dependent on the Friends to help us out. Most of their donations are fairly small, the book sales we sell, or they sell for $2 a copy. So it takes a lot of money to, a lot of sales to get up to an amount which will help us put on one program, let alone 204 this last year. And they've done tremendous work. They're doing a lot to try and generate more money. But we really need to have some help if we are to keep the current level and, and to even build. even build on that or review what we're doing. And this last year, the Friends provided, I think it was $6,840 for the children's programs, over $10,500 for the summer reading program. I would hate to see, you know, those basic programs go. And so hence, this is sort of some more background as to why they have asked for some help and they in turn can help us. So, you know, from my point of view, we understand very much that the fund is for anybody who wishes to apply for it and for you to allocate that. But it would be a hard thing to swallow to feel that the city is giving some money to the Lark but not to our programming as part of, you know, city services. So that's just a little extra background for you.
Okay, thank you very much, Janice. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Janice and Barbara have addressed the issue so well, but I would only add that we are sensitive, Councilwoman Chu, to your point. And the Friends are reorganizing now and we're, we're getting strong. And we hope that we'll get stronger year after year, but we would really appreciate your help.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, we'll bring it, bring it back to the council. Yeah, and I actually just had a question for our city manager. So this is the, the equivalent of the $10,000, that has gone to the Lark in past years?
Yes.
How many years has it gone to them?
I think the first fiscal year was 13, 14.
So three or four years, maybe even five?
I think so.
And it's all about $10,000 a year?
It's been 10,000 every year. Before, in the previous program, the Lark was drawing 17,000 out of the, but that was a different program.
Okay. So just cumulatively, during that period of time, the Lark has benefited about $50,000, more or less, from this program?
Yes, again, I think maybe since the director's not here to speak about the Lark, it doesn't subsidize the operation of the Lark.
No, I understand.
They've petitioned you mostly about one particular festival they couldn't put on without your contribution.
Right. And it's too bad that we can't hear from them tonight as well. Okay, well, I just wanted to get that clarification. Any other comments or questions?
I just have a question. Before, we used to have an application period. Was, what you've received here was just a letter asking for the money? Were, did the Lark submit a letter?
So the Lark has always submitted a letter requesting funds when you created this program. Because in the absence of any structure, I told them, how about a letter explaining what you want the money for? And we'll just take that to council as an agenda item. So that's what's happened in the past. You're remembering the old program where they would, when I, if I recall correctly, in its last couple of years, had, you were setting aside $50,000 and soliciting applications from all sorts of entities about how they would stimulate activity in the downtown. And that was the criteria, that they had to fill out the application and explain how they would apply the money to, to bring activity into the downtown area. And that's what you're recalling when there was an application process.
Yeah. So now they just send you a letter?
That's how we've been doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, but we didn't get a letter at this point?
Well, again, the Lark has in the past come to you in March and usually, sometimes April. And so I would suggest that when you have a program that's sort of been operating quietly without a lot of interest in it and without a lot of structure, there's never been anybody to tell anybody, you better send in a letter at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. It's fair enough. Any other comments or questions? So do we need a vote to approve the resolution?
If you would like to direct me to spend some of this money, then you should take some sort of vote, yes.
Okay. Okay. Does, anyone want to make a motion to approve the resolution?
You know, I'm still kind of thinking out loud at this point because one of the things is that, you know, the Lark has been asking for the money at whatever schedule that they do. And if we go a full 10 on this, then they won't be getting anything. Is that correct? And they would not have had a chance to prepare for being $10,000 short. Now, that's, that's the only thing I'm grappling with right now. So if you were to go with Ann's suggestion of splitting the 10 with, and then we can have a discussion amongst, you know, the council the next time, if there're going to be multiple applicants for the same 10, then we need to kind of like decide that in advance in terms of how we're going to allocate the dollars during the budget cycle. Because this is kind of awkward right now.
Yeah.
In a sense that we have a request for 10 and another organization that has been applying for the money, but it won't be, say, for another five or, you know, four or five months with the expectation, maybe some tacit expectation that they might have been getting it only because we've been giving it to them every year.
And they've had change in their director and staff, so they may not know the whole history of the program and the fact that it was a first-come, first-served, although that's been reported in the staff report every year.
Mm-hmm.
There may be some complacency on their part. I don't know. You know, having listened to the speakers, one option the council may want to consider if you want to take a little more time with this is to, to wait until your mid-year budget process because the speaker's sort of convoluted two separate issues here, which is the award of a grant to the Friends in the city's general fund budget. To the best, in my seven years here, none, no library director or library board's ever asked for there to be an allocation in the general fund budget for programming. So it's a discussion you've never been asked to have. And that was sort of, I could draw that out of what was presented here as a totally different topic to discuss.
Yeah, no, I understand that because it, it sounds like we're retaining a portion of the TOT for the general fund.
Well, that, that is one possible interpretation those presentations might now have implied to, to the public, right?
Well, I mean, I got that immediately, so...
So that's a sensitivity to be aware of too.
Yeah, which is part of the other thing I'm kind of struggling with, which is what's making it hard for me, you know, as much as, you know, we'd like to fund all our organizations that have, you know, this community, you know, where the community actually uses these as fun things.
So just to clarify, your suggestion is to maybe put this off until the mid-year budget review?
Well, you may want to now have a discussion about the city's budget for the library. That might add to the discussion you have about this particular pot of money. And I, I think prob, I may be over speculating, but I have to think the library can manage programming still till February, you know, which is the latest you would have that discussion.
That's one we'd have to...
You're going to have it in the second meeting in January or the first meeting of February.
So it's really not that far out, a couple of months, to three months maybe?
In my perspective, it's not that far out, but I don't do library programming, so I don't want to guess. You may want to ask Janice.
I, yeah, we could do that. I mean, I, I actually like that idea because we do, that does get, create an opportunity for the Lark to come forward if they wish to do that and maybe have some outreach about that. I'm also very sensitive to the fact that they've benefited fairly significantly over a long period of time from this program. So I don't want to, I don't want to prejudge any particular outcome, but I think having that conversation in connection with a budget discussion might be a good idea.
The council may also, I'll solicit the direction, you may want to direct me to suggest for the future that there's an application process for this money.
Or at least a timeframe in which these requests can be made.
That would be my suggestion. Yeah, I think we need to be a little more sophisticated and have the application.
Well, first-come, first-served sounds really good when you start something, but after a while, yeah, maybe a little more formal process is necessary.
So that would be my suggestion, Dan.
Okay.
So I guess the direction for staff is that we're going to postpone the discussion for mid-year budget review?
We'll agendize them together if that makes sense to the council, same night.
Mm-hmm.
Do probably the budget discussion first since that might clarify issues on this discussion.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that would accomplish a couple of different objectives with this.
Good idea, Dan. We'll try.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation and the comments. And again, I think this is a live issue just because of the circumstances. I think in fairness to everybody who has an interest in the outcome of this issue, we need to give it a little more thought.
And thank you, Friends of the Library. We were so happy it's, it's been recreated. So thanks for all your hard work.
Okay. So I think that concludes the discussion on 7.1. So other than providing that direction to the city manager, we don't have any specific action that would require a motion. That'll take us to item number 7.2, adoption.
Eight.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm looking backwards, aren't I? 8.2, apologize for that. Consideration of Possible Action to Appoint Council Members to Represent the City of Larkspur on Two New Ad-Hoc Committees Established by the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members. Is this something for which we have a staff report or is this something we just need to discuss by ourselves?
I'm sure that if you want a staff report, Jamie, we'll give you one, but it, I think it is fairly self-explanatory. There are these two committees and they would like you to appoint somebody.
Yeah, and I think we can...
Sorry, I stole your thunder, Jamie.
We can figure it out. Unless you really would like to provide a staff report.
Without being dictatorial, I think I have to be one of the members to the pension OPEB thing because I'm supposed, I was asked to chair it. So, so I guess really, if anybody else would like to serve on that, you know, every city is given two positions and alternate.
And I would like to be on that committee as well. I've worked with you on the OPEB issues and this would expand the scope of that discussion a little bit, so I certainly would volunteer.
That's fantastic. Thank you both for doing that.
Would you willing to be the alternate?
I would be happy to be the alternate.
Again, on the other one, Catherine shares it, so she, it's almost like automatic she has to be on it.
She would be fabulous at it, yeah.
And that only requires one member and one alternate, so I would endorse that, but we need an alternate.
Since I'm already alternate to the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee, I, I can stay on as the alternate and let someone else wants to. I don't expect the alternate to ever be needed because if she can't make a meeting, she's just going to call another date.
There you go. Thank you both for taking that.
That's an easy. Do we need any, any more formal action on approving these recommendations?
Ultimately, they're mayoral appointments, so I think you just got your direction, Mr. Mayor, on who to appoint.
I therefore make appointments consistent with the direction I've received from the council. So thank you very much for that. And with that, I think we proceed to agenda item number nine, which is to adjourn the meeting. Unless there's any further comment or discussion, we'll proceed with a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Janice.